The Chamber of Commerce, along with the town, will sponsor-
I think Hillary is here to speak.
I see Mr. Robinson over there. We will give him an opportunity. We'll sponsor an emergency preparedness breakfast. The town administrator, Mel Kleckner, and police chief Dan O'Leary will be there with others. They'll give information, everything you need to know in case of an emergency. And I also understand that there's going to be a little bit of fundraising for Team Brookline. But since Mr. Robinson is here, maybe if you want to come over to the podium, we can ask you to tell us more than I remember. Hi there.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Again, Harry Robinson, Executive Director of Brookline Chamber of Commerce. And indeed, tomorrow morning, Wednesday, June 5th, we are with the town and Brookline Police. We put together our emergency awareness and preparedness breakfast. We're really excited about it. For a couple reasons, the information we're going to bring to the public through Casey Hatchet- Casey Hatchet and the CERT team-
Casey Hatchet.
Casey Hatchet, thank you. And the CERT team has a wonderful presentation that they're going to put on. And then, we're also very excited about where we're able to acknowledge some of the first responders on the force and some local businesses and organizations that were very kind in giving the week of the marathon event. So, we're really thrilled about that. And our- thank Mr. Kleckner for being there with us. And we just want to let people know about it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Robinson while we have him standing here? It's at the Holiday Inn. Holiday Inn on Beacon Street, 7:45 a.m.
Well, one thing you also mentioned was that a portion of the ticket price will be donated to Team Brookline.
Exactly. Okay. Don't go away, because I think there's another Chamber-type event and maybe Selectman Goldstein would like to-
Even before that, no, it was past me. I was going to say, "Harry, do you want to say anything about the golf event coming up?"
I would love to. Our annual charitable golf tournament, it's actually collaboration. Last year, we started something we're very pleased with. We actually collaborate with Brookline Rotary, so it's both the Chamber and Rotary working together on our annual golf tournament. And it's to benefit the Kids' Clothes Club, which is a local Brookline grassroots organization. So, this has been going on for a while, but last year was our first collaboration with Rotary, which we're thrilled about. So, the event is growing very nicely. And we thank Mr. Goldstein for being one of our players. That is coming up Friday, June 14th, at the Robert T. Lynch Municipal Golf Course. They're great partners with us, and we're thrilled to have that coming up.
And what time?
It is 7:00 a.m. registration, 8:00 a.m. shotgun start. And it runs through roughly 2:30. There's a luncheon in the Vine Wright Grill after the round of 18.
Sounds very good. Any other questions for Mr. Robinson while we have him before us? Okay, well, thank you very much. And I'm going to move on to a few other announcements. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, June 8th, at the Devotion House in front of the Devotion School, 345 Harvard Street, the 35th Annual Coolidge Corner Arts Festival, and the 6th Annual Brookline Food Festival will happen. The food festival proceeds benefit the Brookline Emergency Food Pantry. The festival starts at 10:00 a.m., runs to 6:00 p.m. We'll have good food to eat and all kinds of interesting pottery, jewelry, glass, fiber art, and many, many other interesting things. I believe there are about 75 vendors expected. On Monday, June 10th, the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance will hold its annual meeting, 7:00 p.m. in this room, the Selectman's Meeting Room in Town Hall. There will be some awards, including one to Cara Bruton, our interim planning director, and also a talk on Brookline and the development of Metropolitan Boston by James O'Connell from the National Park Service. And another event that's sort of similar, next Thursday, at 6:30 p.m. in the Coolidge Corner Library, the John Kennedy National Historic Site, the Brookline Historical Society, and the Campaign to Preserve St. Adens will host a presentation on the historical, architectural, and cultural significance of St. Adens to the Coolidge Corner neighborhood. So, other announcements? Yes, Selectman Binka.
One more. This actually is a hold the date, and I'll be mentioning it again next week. Next Wednesday, June 12th, the Bee Bear Book Club is having its second season premiere. The Bee Bear Book Club is a collaboration between Brookline Early Education and BATV. And it is a program that's aimed at young readers and young viewers with authors and storytelling and animation and puppets designed to improve literacy. This had one very successful season, and the second season is kicking off on Wednesday, June 12th. Just the collaboration is supported by a grant from the Brookline Community Foundation as well. So, next Wednesday, June 12th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at BATV, you can watch the show. You take your young readers there, get a DVD, meet the authors, play on the set, meet the puppets, and get some snacks and do crafts.
And BATV is where?
Is in the Unified Arts- thank you, Unified Arts Building at- near the high school, 46 Tappan Street, the top floor.
Okay.
And I actually met one of the puppets who likes cheesecake. I found out, so-
You met Wally the Green Monster and another puppet, all in the same house?
This has been a year to remember.
Okay. Any other select people with updates or announcements? Then, yes.
I just want to say, on behalf of this board, I attended the annual event that the JFK-
Oh, right.
The Park Service, who runs the home of John F. Kennedy, the home he was born in-
Birthplace.
On Beale Street, yes. Yeah, literally his birthplace, because he was born in the house. And they do a collaboration with the third graders at the Devotion School. And the third graders go visit the home and learn some of his history and his life. And then, they go down to the Kennedy Library in Boston, and then they write poems and essays. And it was a wonderful event, as always. Because of rain, it had to be in the Devotion School instead of out in front of the house. But the- I always learn interesting stuff from the kids, so it was very fun.
Good.
Oh, and I have one other thing.
Sure.
Tomorrow evening, for anyone who's interested, the diversity committee is meeting at 5:30.
Okay, moving along. Mr. Kleckner has a few updates for us.
I had a few things that I wanted to advise the board about and use this forum to inform the public, because it involves them. The first is, I think, good news. We will be finally converting our multi-space meters in our town parking lots to a pay-by-space methodology. So, as you remember, this is- will avoid having to go back to your vehicle and place a- the receipt on the dashboard, visible to the parking meter attendants. In this case, the pay-by-space will be apparent to you. We're erecting small signs designating the space number. And all a parker has to do is note that. And when they- they can go to any of the parking machines that- they can really go to any parking machines in the town. But in that parking lot, they can go whichever one is convenient. And once they press in the number and how long they're staying and make the transaction, they no longer have to revert- return back to the vehicle. So, we think that's going to be a major factor in improving convenience of these particular meters. As you know, we've already replaced those kind of meters with multi-space, single-space, I should say, meters on the street, which I think is working very well. So, this is the second and final component of our parking meter improvement program.
And out of curiosity, I remember that we were going to take multi-space meters that were taken off the curbside and add them to our parking lots?
Correct.
Is that already done?
That's correct. Yeah, well, they've been placed there, but they haven't been activated until this program. So, you're right.
But there will be more of them, I guess.
There will be more, and they'll be more strategically located, hopefully to eliminate the queue times or wait times, especially in inclement weather.
Good.
The next two matters are not great news, but probably not surprising, given the pace of technology and how business models change with technology. But we've been informed by two vendors that they will no longer be providing services to the town or to its- well, in one case, to its residents, to both cases, residents. One is our PXD card. This was the card that was developed to use in single-space parking meters and also to give it a try to use as a merchant type of card with local merchants. A PXD has advised us that they will no longer be working with us come December 31st of the end of the year. So, people can use their PXD cards and the meters that accept them up until December 31st, and then there will be a process to seek cash refunds after that. So, quite honestly, we're not surprised, and we kind of got that flavor when we were specing out our new single-space meters. And although we required that these meters be available to be used with a PXD card or something similar, we found that that's really not the way this market's going. Now, they do accept credit cards and debit cards, and I think that's probably more where things are heading. And I think they're probably heading towards the phones.
Also, there were fewer and fewer businesses who were willing to sell the car.
Yeah, it hasn't worked out really beneficially, as we had initially thought. The other service that is- the company that has advised us is our Galaxy Wireless Service, which is- was a fantastic experiment. I learned about it when I was in a different community. And we were all very impressed with how Brookline was able to develop a sort of a community-based wireless network. And the town uses it as well. Our police department uses it for internet access in their laptops, and we also use it for these multi-space meters. We are looking at alternatives, and we will find alternatives. But unfortunately, Galaxy service will be going out of business. And there are several residents and businesses who, I believe, use that service. So, they have already been informed, but I wanted to make that announcement today.
Selectman Goldstein?
What will happen to their hardware that's up on poles all over town?
You know, we're looking- we're talking to them, talking to potential other vendors. So, I mean, if they really go out of business, we'll have them remove them.
Yeah. I seem to remember that they posted some kind of bond removing them.
Probably. I don't know. I'll have to look into it more. We're going to do some more research. We are looking at other vendors who might be willing to assume that contract. But as I said, I think this business model that they're- is not very competitive any longer.
Well, I think, you know, home Wi-Fi became so inexpensive that that really became low.
Yeah, and it's packaged with all the cable providers, so that's- the price has really come down.
Selectman Binka?
Yeah. Is Galaxy the provider to the Housing Authority buildings now?
I don't know.
I think part of the deal was that they would provide low-cost or no-cost access-
It may very well be that they are, because I don't think we had another provider like that.
And I'm just wondering what the implications of that will be.
More things to find out.
Yeah.
I think we've just heard about this, so clearly, it's early stages. And for all I know, there may be some way of converting their equipment for use with another vendor or some other way. But we certainly need to understand what will happen.
Well, the big provider that was trying to get into the space, EarthLink, abandoned the space some years ago.
Right.
I'm actually surprised Galaxy hung on as long as they did.
Right. It's interesting, those names that used to be common that we don't hear anymore.
I do know a couple of people that tried to use it as their-
Regular.
Their regular. And it didn't seem to work very well for people. So, I think that they probably didn't get a lot of customers out of it, which is what they had hoped for.
Well, more to come. But at least we're trying to put people on alert that the Galaxy service is likely to be terminated in the near future. Okay, next item, public comment. Is Mr. Fleishman here? Please come forward to the microphone at the podium. Just identify yourself by name and address.
Yeah, my name is Paul Fleishman. I live at 91 St. Paul Street in Brookline.
Okay. And just so that you know the guidelines, we listen, but we do not comment.
If you can control yourself. Okay. So, please disregard stuff when it gets too emotional. This is an emotional issue for me lately. So, I've lived in Brookline for over 20 years. And for the last few months, I felt like a victim of abusive developer. I was frustrated and aggravated. Since yesterday, I have been in a much better place after talking to Dan Bennett, Mike Yanovich, and the building inspector Frank. I don't remember his last name. So, I feel much better now. So, I asked to speak before that. In short, a developer bought a two-family house next door. With assistance from experienced local attorney, he obtained numerous variances and permits, although a few residents had issues with the project, and nobody supported it at the hearing. So, it was very surprising. All of this was disregarded. Throughout the project, he had aggravated the neighbors, created dust, noise, unfavorably changed the appearance of the house, removed very tall healthy tree, ruined our driveway, which was specifically being prohibited from using it, created money drain for the town, again, not a legal issue, in terms of educational expenses, because now there will be probably five kids living in that house with all that space. My questions and suggestions. Can the town attach some conditions to variances and permits? Specifically, I mentioned the potential for damaging our driveway, but nothing was done about it. How do we follow up on requests, warnings presented at the hearings by the residents? Can we create a simple brochure for the residents and send it together with notifications about hearings indicating seriousness of decisions? Available sources of information, including building department, which I learned too late, watch-outs, approval process, et cetera. It will be especially useful for the immigrants, young people, older people, and other groups. Can we have a hearing during and/or at the end of the project to make sure that there are no new concerns? This developer did not establish relations with the neighbors as requested during the hearing. So, we have very capable officials, as I'm learning. Let's work more closely with the residents to protect abuses of our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman. May I just make a suggestion? And that is, if you could write your comments in a way that we can add them to our minutes of the meeting, for one, and also, we can pass along to our planning director. There may be some things that we do already that you didn't know about, or maybe they could take some of your suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have a question, not to Mr. Fleishman. But is there a brochure that is available that indicates what the planning board and ZBA process will be?
Ms. Bruton, can you-
So, Cara Bruton, Planning Department, there certainly is a piece of information that shows a flow chart of process.
Yeah.
But you have to know to look for it, first of all. And frankly, it's probably way too general to be useful. And so, I think it does make sense, you know, no matter what happens, even if items are resolved now, we should do a post-mortem and figure out how to make it-
And well, and I- the suggestion was perhaps including it in the notification to butters.
In some simple language that you would like to say.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving along into our miscellaneous calendar, the first item is home- oops, sorry, minutes. Ms. Price, just a second. We have two sets of minutes. Minutes from May 21st and from May 28th. I actually corrected the May 28th ones, but since it involves Selectman Goldstein, you might want to look and see what I said before you give it to Kate.
Hold on. I'll take a look.
And I also have some-
It's just that first page. All right. So, please pass in any changes to-
Good. I approve it. Thank you.
Okay. Then, I move that we approve the minutes from Tuesday, May 21st and Tuesday- no, sorry, Thursday. Which one's the- anyway, May 21st and May 28th, as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And next item is home consortium. Ms. Price. And I did receive, and I'm going to ask you this as you come up, by email, something that I'm quite sure you know about. But as the Chair of the Board of Selectment, I got a message from the Acting Assistant Secretary for Community Planning and Development, basically talking about sequestration and its impacts. And I don't know whether that has impacted us directly yet or not.
Fran Price, Housing Development Manager, Planning Department. I don't know how to answer that. I can tell you that we've heard about our home allocation, and it's actually a few thousand dollars more than we expected.
Oh, okay.
I don't think the sequestration-
I can't say it either.
-covers next year's budget, so I really don't know. I can tell you that our HUD representative has, I think, one day off every two weeks.
Ah, yeah.
Or either once a month or every two weeks now.
Right.
They're very nice to give it the day before the Memorial Day weekend and the day after the Fourth of July, but still, it's a cut in his pay. But that's all I can tell you about it. I'm sure Gail Lewis has more information.
Well, this was a very generic notice, so I just used the opportunity to ask.
I'm here to ask for three votes related to the town of Brookline's participation in the West Metro Home Consortium. One is to amend the existing three-year- we're in our last year of the three-year mutual cooperation agreement among the 14 communities. The second is to enter into a new mutual cooperation agreement, starting in July 2014. And finally, to designate Joseph Viola as the town's representative to the consortium council. The reason why we're- why the consortium is looking to amend and to get a head start on the next mutual cooperation agreement reflects the increasing difficulty of using home funds. As you may be aware, the town is one of 14 members in a home consortium, which is administered by the City of Newton. We were actually one of the original four members in the early '90s when the home program began. We weren't large enough to be an entitlement community and could only participate by being in a consortium of communities that reached the funding level required for entitlement. At one time, the town was getting as much as a half a million dollars. This next year, we're scheduled for about $261,000. So, each year, we've been getting less and less money. We are actually the largest- we have the largest allocation of the 14 communities. Some are as low next year as $7,000. So, as you can imagine, it's increasingly difficult to spend home money. And at the same time, HUD is increasing its enforcement of the rules for expenditure. It's two years to commit the money, four years to expend the money. So, it's actually harder to spend little money in affordable housing. As a result, the consortium is concerned about meeting expenditure commitment and expenditure deadlines that come once a year, and has looked at other models. The model that was- is most known in the Boston area is the North Shore Model, in which all the communities pool their money, and there is an RFP put out annually. In fact, Brookline would have the most to lose from this. And we have been able to pretty successfully use our home money by aggregating it over multiple years. So, after about a year and a half of discussion, we've come to- there was an agreement reached to, in fact, have a hybrid model, where instead of having two years to commit money, each community has one year to commit their money or to lend it to another community that's ready for commitment in exchange for future monies to that community. And after that one year, the money goes into a pool, which will be subject to an RFP. And it's not great for Brookline, because I think we've been very successful in using the money, but it's, I think, the best approach. The problem for the consortium is that if any of the small communities withdraw, other communities can lose their opportunity to participate, because they have to be contiguous communities. Moving from the amendment amended three-year to the new mutual cooperation agreement that would start July 1st of 14, we're already losing one community. I think Lincoln is dropping out. But there was a problem with the potential of maybe Lexington dropping out, which would mean that Framingham would lose out. So, it's been- Newton has worked very, very hard to try to bring consensus to a compromise, which will help us- help move money into affordable housing projects to the extent possible. And it just means that we have to be prepared to move more quickly with committing our funds in the future.
How does the vote work? So, let's say there's, you know, competing- well, in the instance where you're borrowing money between towns, the way you described. So, I mean, who decides when a town agrees to release monies to another town?
Well, I think what would happen, for instance, if we were- we had a project that we were ready to commit to and we could use more money. And let's say Newton was not able to commit their funds within that first year. We could ask them to lend us their, say, $100,000. And what we would be committing, we would have to come to have a public hearing and make an amendment to our plan. And if everyone agreed, then next year, we would forego $100,000. Assuming the program continued, we would forego $100,000 to repay-
I see. So, there's no right to have another community cooperate with you on it?
No, there's no right to have it.
But once you've- once you've been the lender in that situation, you know, once you've given up your funds for one year, do you have the right to require funds back in a future year?
Well, if you lend it, you have the right to get it back, assuming that there's a continued home program and it's producing those funds.
Right. Okay.
So, it's not a pledge of general funds or anything. It's just within the home system.
Oh, I understand.
But it makes it- it's a better way to go forward, because it's, you know, it still gives- it would give Brookline, for instance, a chance to- more of a chance to commit our funds, knowing that we have a greater- we have a- we've had a pretty strong- I shouldn't say a quarter of a million isn't really very strong when it comes to affordable housing, but we have been continuing to get a good portion of funds every year.
And have been successful in getting projects funded.
We've been very successful, in part because we have been, I guess, because we have had multi-year allocations. For instance, for the Dummer Street project, we have two years of commitments. So, we have fiscal '12 money and fiscal '13 money. Plus, we're about- as we commit, the fiscal '14 money will be in. So, we're actually having three years' worth of money. Plus, we have reprogrammed some homebuyer assistance money that had been repaid when units were sold in the past two years. So, we're able, even though we only get $261,000 in fiscal '14 and about the same this year, we're able to put- we're going to be able to put 1.1 million of home money into Dummer Street.
Yeah, right.
And St. Adens, we were able to put 1.7 million in.
Selectman Daley, you were-
Yeah. Fran, I have a question. I heard a rumor recently that struck fear into my heart, and it was that you were retiring soon. Is that- is there any truth to that rumor?
Well, I'll be taking retirement. I- yes, I'll be leaving- I'll be leaving my job at Brookline.
How much longer do we have?
The date is August 9th, so I'm trying to move a lot of things forward before then.
Well, we have two great projects in process, so. I wanted to say that I think you've done an outstanding job, and we are very sorry to see you go. And I think, just trying to explain, this is a prime example of the very complicated financing that goes on in the world of affordable housing. And you are the master at this.
Thank you.
And we will sorely miss you.
Absolutely agree.
Absolutely agree.
More to come. More accolades to come, Fran.
Right, right. You're not getting away without being noticed.
Thank you.
Could I?
Yes.
Could I, um, I'm just curious as to how this is going to play out, um, once the money, if it goes into the pot. As I understand this, we have a year to commit. If that doesn't happen by this agreement, it would go into a common fund.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, at that point, it could be allocated to any community.
That's right.
And, uh, we'd have a vote on that, uh, in proportional to our per capita, proportional to the money that we put in?
No, it's always been a one-community, one-vote system.
Okay.
And, uh, but, so the, the criteria, the criteria for, um, the, uh, the use of the, uh, the, the fund is first, projects that are ready to go. So if we've been successful and we're, continue to be successful in having projects that are ready to proceed, uh, that's one criteria. But the other criteria are CHODO, um, projects, community housing, development corporation projects-
Brookline Improvement Coalition projects.
Yes, um, and, um, and also, um, and also small communities. So we have, we, because we have a more active affordable housing program, we may have a good chance in being able to move money, but we don't really have a very active CHODO at this point, and we don't have, um, and we're not a small community.
We're not a small community.
The small communities have hardly been able to make use of this program at all.
So why is this in our interest?
It's in our interest not to be moving towards the full pooled system.
But-
And to make sure that the, and to make sure that the consortium, uh, continues. It's extraordinary how much work that Newton does for the consortium, and their total administrative, um, their administrative, uh, uh, overhead from the home program is $36,000. That's, to me, the amazing thing, and they're, and they're still willing to continue to try to herd cats, in fact, the fourteen, now thirteen, communities, uh, that are trying to commit these funds.
Would we have the option of doing this, just going our own way?
No.
We don't?
No, because we're, we're way below the, I don't know what the threshold is now, but, uh, I'm sure it hasn't, um, it hasn't been reduced, and we are getting about the same amount of money now that we got in, uh, 1992.
Okay, so it's either, it's either this or the full pooling are the options that are available to us.
Right, or, or not participating and not getting home funds.
Not getting anything.
Right, okay, okay.
It's, it's interesting that, one of the things I've noted recently is that some communities are using home funds to do repairs in their state-owned public housing. And if that's the case, that might be a way that we can, you know, that might be a good use for our money where we've been spending CDBG.
Okay.
So, um, something to explore more. So I'm not sure that we'd ever be losing money, if that, if that's actually an option.
But we surely do have to master the complications of the process. And we know, um, to second, uh, Selectman Daly's comment, that you have mastered them, and we really do appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so, um, I believe we have three votes before us, and I'm going to move them simultaneously. Uh, first, that we execute an amendment to the existing mutual cooperation agreement in connection with the home consortium. Second, that we execute a new three-year mutual cooperation agreement in connection with the home consortium effective July one, 2014. And third, that we vote to designate Joseph Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning, to be Brookline's representative to the consortium council. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the summer schedule for the Board of Selectmen, and I believe we have, um, an updated schedule proposal. I want to make sure everybody notices. So the expectation is that because of the election on, uh, June 25th, the board will be meeting on Wednesday, June 26th, and then in July, the board will meet alternately. It will not meet on July 2nd, it will meet on July 9th, not on the 16th, it would meet on the 23rd, and then we'd skip two weeks, July 30th and August 6th, have a meeting on August 13th, no meeting on the 20th, a meeting on the 27th, assuming it's required, and not meet on the Monday, September 3rd after Labor Day, sorry, Tuesday, September 3rd after Labor Day.
And that, on to the right-
And then back to normal on the 10th, right? So, any, um, questions or concerns from members of the board?
Uh, just say I like this version better than the first version.
Okay. Um, it would probably be good, uh, for members to give their vacation plans to, um, either the town administrator, me, or Patty Parks, just because we would want to be sure we have a quorum at each meeting.
It's a good idea.
It's actually a pretty useful idea, to have a quorum at each meeting. I don't think we need to take a vote on this, um, but I do believe I've heard that we are in agreement that the, um, second proposed schedule is acceptable. Then, uh, next item is a change order. Mr. Giggly, with regard to the Runkel School.
Good evening. The, uh, question before you is change order number forty-seven to the contract between the Town of Brookline and GNR Construction for the John D. Runkel School renovations and additions in the amount of $60,000.
Okay. Go ahead.
If, if approved, this is a, a settlement of claims, uh, of all parties, uh, the town and the contractor for their work on the project.
Okay, and that, uh, means that the, um, contractor's work would be completely, um, we'd, we'd be signed off on that?
Uh, y- yes, we, we still retain, um, rights to the completion of punch list items-
Right, punch lists still to go.
-warranties, closeout documents, and any latent conditions that were-
Right.
-there were none that we're aware of at this point.
Right, okay.
But, but the contractor would have no further claim against the town.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Giggly? Seeing and hearing none, I move that we approve change order number forty-seven in the amount of $60,000 for work completed by GNR Construction in connection with the Runkel School renovations and additions. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giggly. And next, we execute the warrant for the election on June 25th. I think it's pretty straightforward, there are no unusual polling places, um, any questions about that item? Then I move that we execute the warrant for the June 25th, 2013 special state election. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski? Whoops, sorry, Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Got to get this sequence right. Chair votes aye. And, um, there are two temporary alcoholic beverage, um, permits, one for the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for June 8th, and, oh, I think that's the only one. Okay, I thought there were two here. All right, fine. If that's the case, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, um, a more significant item, a letter to the Boston Redevelopment Authority concerning the Circle Cinema Site, and yes, Ms. Bruton, would you like to walk us through There clearly have been some changes since the town voted the zoning.
Yes.
Proposed changes, I gather, not yet accepted changes, but-
Right, right. So Kara Bruton for the Planning Department, um, just to step back, kind of big picture as you were mentioning, um, we actually started looking at this project back in 2009 with the Urban Land Institute, when we were looking at the, um, site across the street where the reservoir station is. Um, fall of 2010, we kind of put some sticks into zoning bylaw, the spring of 2011, we had the carrots and some kind of upzoning for the Brookline portion of it. After 2011 town meeting, the developer, um, submitted a project notification, um, to the City of Boston, which did not include the Applebee's site. I don't know if you remember that twist and turn.
Right.
And at that point, I came to you all and asked that you write a comment letter, um, stating that we really wanted to see both sites developed together, that we thought it was important to look at this holistically. So, um, it took a while to get the Applebee's site back under control, but they did, and the developer came back in August of last year, um, and restarted the permitting process both with Brookline and Boston. And, um, so they submitted a project notification form to Boston, which is kind of the first step. They started preliminary meetings, um, with Brookline. We formed a design advisory team, and that, our design advisory team has met three times. Um, members have gone to City Hall during their scoping and staff meetings. We've had the head of the Boston Civic Design Commission come to our DAT meeting here. Um, we had a joint meeting with Boston and Brookline, um, so a lot of activity's been going on. But comments for this phase, for this draft project impact report for Boston are due Friday. I said my email was due Monday, but it's actually this Friday. Um, so we're in the middle of having everything still being reviewed by Planning Board and DAT Transportation Division, but I felt like, again, it was time to ask you all to step in and write a formal comment letter to the City of Boston. Um, there has been comment throughout that the building massing is too tall, especially along the Clinton Road facade.
It's been growing, actually, I believe, right?
It has been-
Adding stories?
Um, it's been growing, yes. So originally, the whole project, including Boston and Brookline, was 180,000 square feet. Um, and after town meeting, residents wanted the medical office to go away and apartments to come in, and as a result of that, we saw a large jump from 180,000 to 230,000 square feet, again, for the whole project. The Brookline portion hasn't changed at all during all of this. Um, our zoning is very tight, but what this letter focuses on is, um, especially the massing along the lower end of the site where the, um, project site is at the same topography elevation as Clinton Road residents. The design advisory team is also meeting tomorrow night, so they're going to be writing their own comment letter. It's likely going to be very specific, with very specific design comments. Um, this letter is hopefully, if, if you all are willing, um, just kind of outlining and prioritizing the largest, um, two concerns that the Town of Brookline still has, and making sure that the, um, City of Boston and the developer hear us. So that, two issues that I've outlined for you, um, number one is the Clinton Road facade, and in that, I kind of walked through the different diagrams of how we've seen the project change. Um, not only did it grow, um, a story or two towards the rear, but also, there used to be a jog back, which provided some area for landscaping buffer, um, and that is now one flat facade, so that landscaping buffer is now gone. During this draft, this DPIR, this draft project impact report process, the developer has made, um, some steps towards peeling back that top story, that fourth story overparking a little bit, um, but frankly, I don't feel like it's enough, and I think some of us have heard from residents on Clinton Road who also don't feel that it's enough. So I'm looking at this proposal as of May 31st, um, 2013, it shows you kind of where the current proposal is. Um, and what this letter asks is that, um, we, so the, there's a sentence here, "The Board of Selectmen strongly recommends that significantly more of the Clinton Road building facade be returned to the spring 2011 proposal of three stories overparking, um, along with screening, especially where the proposed building is closer and at the same elevation as the homes on Clinton Road." So that's the first and, and largest topic. The second topic in your comment letter is shared parking analysis. Um, Transportation Division, um, has been looking at this project throughout, and they've commented, and, um, the proponents, engineers have responded with various items. We also use beta engineering as our transportation consultant. Um, at this point in time, we're not, we're not able to say that the shared parking analysis is complete, and this is important because in order to meet Brookline zoning, we need to make sure that shared parking works. And there is a push and pull here where Boston is setting maximum parking ratios, and our zoning has minimum parking ratios, and with the program changing, it's very complex. But what we're asking in this letter is, put all of the zoning aside, we need to make sure the project works. And so, um, beta, our transportation consultant, has already asked BDG for this, um, but this is just documenting that we need to see that analysis done per transportation industry standards before we can move forward. So we're just kind of letting people know, this project's not going to go forward unless we see the numbers work out. On that last page, you'll, I just wanted to point out, there's a, um, couple sentences about medical office, where it says, "A selectman note in the DPIR that the medical office is only 13% of the gross floor area, but generating 25% of the project trips during morning and evening peak hours. These concerns regarding shared parking may be lessened if the medical office could be converted to other less intense unit, um, uses." And there has been talk about possibly shifting that medical office to hotel uses.
So-
I'm going to leave it there and let you, and answer your questions, I think.
Yeah, okay. Um, just, uh, because I'm interested in how this has, um, been changing, with the addition of the additional, um, land site to, to get control of the total site, um, that didn't seem to resolve things sufficiently so that they were not obliged to add height to the portion that's adjacent to Clinton Road? I mean, what's happened, and there are two things that happened. One is they gained control over Applebee's, and so they, they've expanded to cover that, but that could be a much taller building with lower impact on Clinton Road.
Yeah, there, so there's many moving parts, but one is they, they did get the Applebee's site under control, but really what bumped up the square footage overall was the ask to convert medical office to apartments.
Ah.
That's where the square footage bumped up. Then, during this process, um, the Boston officials and some residents in Boston asked that the massing be pulled away from Cassidy Park, because it does put shadows on the park, and so that massing shifted towards Clinton Road.
Right.
This is asking that it shift back.
And, and, just to be absolutely clear, as I understand it, Clinton Road is in Brookline, but that part of the property is in Boston?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Questions? Selectman Daly?
Yeah, I just want to, um, it, it does seem like that there's been a bait and switch here, that we voted for zoning changes based on one thing that they're not saying anymore, but I, I want to get clarification on, as they're switching over to an apartment building, which was not what we were discussing when it went before town meeting on the zoning, would, would any of those apartments be in Brookline?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, that's good.
We're, we're getting the, um, under the current plan, we're getting hotel rooms and medical office, um, and general office, I think, some.
Yeah, and retail on the ground floor.
And retail on the ground floor.
Right, yeah.
And, um, uh, under the concept that, um, I think some Clinton Road residents are pushing, uh, the medical office would, uh, become hotel and/or general office. Um, the concern is that the medical office generates a lot of traffic. Uh, that's, that's where the trips are generated, and the traffic is of great, and parking is of great concern both to Boston and Brookline residents. So, um, there, I, I'm, um, wondering about the language here a little bit, Kara, at, at just the bottom of the second last page, um, we say, "The Board of Selectmen strongly recommends that significantly more of the Clinton Road building facade be returned to the spring 2011 proposal of three stories overparking, and that space for, for screening be provided as originally contemplated." Um, we've discussed, uh, there, there is some, uh, sparring, uh, among people about how high that building should be or not be. What I would be concerned about is undercutting what the DAT might do, and if they come in and they recommend two stories, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't think we can say two stories now, uh, but I'm wondering if we should say three stories now. I'm wondering if we should say significantly more of the Clinton Road building facade be reduced in that space for screening, uh, because we don't know at this point. Just take out that three-story reference? Not put in a two-story reference? Not put in a three-story reference? Just leave a-
No, yeah, that sounds good. The DAT asked for them, for the developer to come also with an alternative that shows a longer building and lesser stories, so that, that- with an alternative that shows a longer building and lesser stories, so that makes sense not stepping on the DAT's toes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to presuppose what the DAT might be doing here, and I'm afraid that the way that we're writing it, it does do that.
So it would say strongly recommends that significantly...
More of the Clinton Road building facade be reduced.
Be reduced, comma, and the space for screening?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Be reduced in height. In height, yeah. Or revise, you know, the more of the Clinton Road building facade be revised. You know, just something that is less specific and that doesn't matter.
You could say no more than three stories.
Well, I mean, if the DAT comes in a two, I'm not sure we want to be saying...
Or it could be a combination of two and four.
Yeah, yeah.
So just reduced in height.
I really don't want to presuppose what they're going to do. And that would be my only suggestion here.
And Ken, did you have something?
My comments from earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought those were in there already, sorry.
Not in this version.
So I had a comment on the third page, in the parentheses where it says, "I.e..."
It needs to be EG?
Yeah, it should be EG, and it should be... And there was some disconnect earlier about whether hotels in that location, hotel rooms in that location would be acceptable to Clinton Road neighbors. There now seems to be unanimity on the point. So in the parentheses, it should be EG, general office, or hotel at that point.
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Kara, out of curiosity, do you know what the proposed use of the Clinton Road facing windows are going to be?
That is all hotel wing, except for the very first part next to Chestnut Hill Ave. Do you see on your drawing where the facade changes? And that first part, which is all in Brookline, the first floor is restaurant, and the other floors shown are medical and general office.
So the hotel goes all the way back, all the way to the end of the property?
Yeah. So there's 40 hotel rooms in Brookline, which is what we required as a minimum. So there's four floors, it's a double bay. So those first five hotel windows are in Brookline, that you see.
So all the windows facing Clinton Road are...
Mostly in Boston.
And are projected to be hotel rooms?
Yes, yeah.
So they're getting the noise from the T and...
Right, right. I think they would object.
Well, and under some of the alternative plans, there might be more hotel rooms in Brookline. The zoning simply set a minimum.
That's right.
So...
That's the excitement of visiting the city.
It is, I will say, a very challenging site in terms of its shape, although very convenient in lots of ways, and very appealing. And properly done, would add a very important element to a disorganized mess that is currently Cleveland Circle. So we certainly would like to get a good result here. Are there any other comments about the letter and its language? So Kara, do you have all of the suggestions that were made?
Yes, yep.
Then I'm going to move that we approve and authorize the chairman to execute a comment letter to the Boston Redevelopment Authority regarding the Circle Cinema Site. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have a DPW Reserve Fund Transfer. Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon, please tell us all about these items.
Well, this is the annual reconciliation for paying the price for the winter. Just to give you a little bit of background on this past winter, we had 17 total snow and ice events. Every storm is labeled an event, whether we get a half an inch of snow or 28 inches of snow, or a coating of ice. We had 73 total inches of snow accumulation, ranging from storms with a half an inch to the so-called blizzard on February 8th, where we received 26 inches of snow. We went through over 5,000 tons of road salt this past winter. And as you know, on February 12, 2013, you did invoke Chapter 44, Section 31D, that would allow us to overspend our budget going forward and complete the winter. The last event was on March 19th, so I think it's safe to say that we could probably close it out and be done with it.
I hope so. I definitely hope so.
In addition to the operating budget for snow and ice, we did overspend the operating budget by $1,405,001. That is currently the final deficit. However, as we do every year, we scholar our budget in the Public Works Department to find areas where we can take some monies and apply it to the deficit. This year, we were able to find $245,700 in surpluses, primarily through the wages and salaries account. That generally exists from vacancies we have from time to time during the year, and some various other accounts, utilities, and small amount from capital, amounting to $245,700. So the total reserve fund request, which I've already gone to the advisory committee on, by the way, amounts to $816,501.
I don't think the advisory committee can act until we transmit it.
Well, they'd really act. They're still waiting for you.
They're still there, waiting.
They're still waiting. So in addition to the reserve fund, the request for the reserve fund transfer of the $801,000, I have detailed for you, under the request for appropriation transfer, the $245,700, which is from various accounts in Public Works to offset some of this deficit.
And I'm just going to observe that when I was looking in the history of reserve fund transfers, the really high mark for you was in 2011.
Yes.
Was a much bigger number.
Yes.
Okay, questions for the commissioners? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I think this is really a question for... And I know it was a difficult year, and I appreciate that you've found some funding within your budget. But I do have a question for Mr. Cronin, I believe, about... Because this leaves us with...
Eight hundred thousand, I think, a little...
In the reserve fund?
Yeah, 803. And so my question is, that we usually have a flurry of requests that come in toward the end of the budget year, and I was particularly interested in knowing if he has talked to the school department, given their many issues, as to whether they would have any kind of significant reserve fund request coming through.
We have, and they do not. The only one, the only other one we're aware of is Town Clerk's Office will most likely be exceeding their budget, and he'll be appearing before you within the next week or two for a reserve fund transfer.
Well, and we do also have another request, but it's certainly within the balance that's...
Well, yeah, that's part of that balance of 800.
That's true. It's already counted. Okay, thank you.
I...
Selectman Benka?
Sorry. I just wanted to note that this reserve, very substantial reserve fund request is not a result of bad management or bad design. This is something that we have done consistently over the last number of years, recognizing the variability of snow removal costs. And rather than trying to put a large amount into DPW's budget where it might not be needed, we've used this methodology, which is something that the state permits with respect to snow removal expenses specifically. So I actually have looked back, since 2005, the numbers have ranged from zero, and I don't know how we did that in a couple of years, as high as one...
No snow.
Well, no, that's because, and I was on the advisory committee when we asked for this. We asked for them to go through their budget and find surpluses in other accounts and apply them. So I think even the zero years probably had snow balances, but he was able to handle them within his other accounts.
Yeah.
Except for last year, we didn't have any deficit last year.
Right, right. But it went as high as 1.471, almost 1.5 million, as the chair noted in 2011. So this amount, while high, given the snow events that we had last year, is far from the highest, and sort of in the high-to-mid range of where we have been over the last number of years.
Okay, Selectman Goldstein?
I have a quick question about the $200,000 from salaries. So, A, it's a big number to be surplus in the salaries account. Where does that... How do we end up with $200,000 there? And it's a round number, so I assume that there's more there, too. And the question is, how much more is there?
Well, number one, because we have to finish the fiscal year, we don't deplete the entire salary account. We still have three weeks to go.
But I assume we're not spending money that you anticipate using in the next three weeks?
No, but for instance, there may have been $225,000 or $230,000 there, and we always chose to draw down 200, because we still have the...
I see.
We still have the potential of having to spend overtime in the next several weeks, depending on what happens. So we don't like to deplete it totally. That's number one. Number two, it doesn't take very many vacancies in a given year to add up to $200,000 in surplus salaries. You know, if you just figure that you have three or four FTEs in a given year that you haven't filled at any given time. I mean, sometimes we have eight or nine vacancies at a given point during the year. Sometimes we only have one or two. And there are times when we don't have any, but it doesn't take long to add up a substantial surplus in salaries.
I see. So the delta, though, between the $200,000 and how much was in that account is...
Very small.
It's small, got it. Thank you.
Other questions for Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon? No? Then, let's see, how is this vote? We have two votes. We're going to vote approving transfers within the Public Works appropriation, which I will not read out, except to say that there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in the amounts of $9,000, $15,000, $200,000, $1,368, and $20,332. So I'm moving that we approve that, all of those transfers from all of those accounts as enumerated in the calendar, which is total of $245,700. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then, second, I move that we approve and transmit to the advisory committee the request from the DPW Commissioner for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $816,501 for snow and ice account. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, another end-of-year reserve fund transfer from the Human Resources Department.
Good evening. Sandra DeBeau, Human Resources Director. We're requesting a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $130,000 to fund our budget for outside labor and employment law costs, council costs, and also for pre-employment medical and psychological exams through the end of FY13. The increased cost of our outside council were due to several unanticipated and complex issues that arose under the local, state, and federal wage laws, as well as several multi-day arbitrations that carried over this year that we thought would be single day from last year. We had a couple of civil service bypasses, appeals that went nowhere, but we still had to fight them when they were first challenged, and amendments to other ongoing litigation that we did not anticipate. One of our unions has undergone a change in their presence, and during that transition time, there are a couple unfair labor practices that were filed against the town that really, I believe, and I believe the current president would agree with me, that they really should have been filed as grievances. The problem with going to the Division of Labor Relations on unfair labor practice is that it's immediate litigation. You have to get the attorneys involved. You have to prepare to go forward to a probable cause hearing of such, rather than trying to resolve the matter through the grievance process. We had a couple of those, which we generally don't have at all. So generally, our monthly costs hover around $10,000 to $13,000. Starting in March, they were creeping up to well above 20, and that has resulted in our request for $110,000 to fund that piece of this request. We also had some unanticipated expenses related to pre-employment screening for two classes, one for police and one for fire, that were larger than our regular classes that we put through. So we had nine firefighters who are currently going through the process, and in the fall of 2012, we put 11 police candidates through the process. So it's unusual for us to hire two classes in one fiscal year, and it's also unusual to have classes of this size. So it sort of compounded the problem. And so we're looking for an additional $20,000 to the end of the fiscal year to cover those costs.
Questions for Ms. DeBeau?
Yes.
Selectman Daley?
I do have a question. On the Afsmi strategy of filing municipal unfair labor practices rather than grievances, if they're successful at all, do we have to pick up their legal costs as well? Or do they have to pay their legal costs?
I believe they pay their own legal costs, and they haven't been successful with this strategy. So we're hoping that it's going to end.
Good, okay. Other questions? No? Okay, then, I move that we approve a transfer within the Human Resources appropriation of $5,000. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And then I...
Yeah, we're not done yet.
Wait a minute, one more. You really want this one?
If you're happy with the five, you can leave now.
Yeah, right. You can go.
Sorry, sorry.
I move that we approve and transmit to the advisory committee the request of Human Resources Director Sandra DeBeau for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $130,000 for outside labor and employment council, and for pre-employment medical and psychological exams through the end of the current fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the business of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, June 4.